Let's call the meeting of the board, stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Is there any public comment on the agenda items tonight? Yes?
Two different things. One, I don't know if this has ever been done before, but Orange County Special Events Committee, which I know they're wonderful, I'm not. There's nothing against the group and they do wonderful work and they're volunteers and I certainly have that spirit of volunteerism, so I give them more credit in the world. However, their application to use the road closure from Willow to the circle on the 30th of November. The concern for me is, and I understand that this is going to be small shop Saturday, in addition to the tree lighting, I think is what was mentioned at the last meeting. Trash removal and cleanup plans. Business owners will clean up the trash in their area. I think that's a very big burden on property owners, business owners, whatever, for that area and maybe the Special Events Committee can organize or clean up themselves, I don't know. The second thing I want to mention is the, and I know you're gonna set possibly a public hearing, but the ADUs, you're having a discussion tonight. Proposed changes, increase allowable size of unit to 1,000 feet, allow one or two bedrooms. That's a full-size house and those are sizes of houses that we have off of Willow, not Willow, I'm sorry, off of Mailer Avenue on the side streets that line Mailer. You have houses there that are under 1,000 feet, that are one to two bedrooms. So, we're going to be putting residential homes in residential, on a residential lot. The other thing, property owner must reside, there's a lot more in here, but I mean looking over just initially. Property owner must reside on the premises and a single-family dwelling, a single-family dwelling cannot be used as long-term rental property. And then what happens when the property's sold? I think there's a lot more about this that I'm not really sure this is fit for this town to do this ADU. Yes, it's wonderful in some aspects, but in other aspects I don't get it. And this is one of the most walkable towns that I have ever, ever encountered. So to say, oh, we're gonna do this so people could walk to Main Street. This town is always bustling with people walking all over the place. So that's a comment that I just, I felt like I needed to make as well. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Is there anybody else? No? Okay, so first we have resolution for tax cap override, schedule of public hearing. We can do that, pass a resolution in next week's meeting, but I just wanted to put this out there. This really is pro forma, pretty much every municipality in Orange County passes this every year because, you know, you cannot finalize your budget if you have to go over the tax cap and you start to run out of time at the end if you don't get this done in the beginning. So, you know, next week I would ask the board to just pass the tax cap, or I'm sorry, to schedule the public hearing on the tax cap override. And even if we pass it, it doesn't mean that we actually have to go through it and it just allows us to do so. I will say, this year though, we do, we are going to be kind of heavy on, we've got, you know, obviously, you know, 10 to 12 percent, you know, increases in health insurance costs going up, we have CSEA and PBA contracts going up, we have the expiration of the ambulance services contract with New Windsor EMS. So those things right there, you know, could, depending on how things shape up, cause that to happen. And I'll also just add too, that the allowable limit this year is approximately $200,000 that we have before we would have to go over the tax cap. So, I think between, I'm just putting it out there to the board, you know, I do think it's gonna be very tight this year. So, that's what, yes?
Can I ask a question? You have it as a resolution for the special?
Yeah, I'm pulling it off, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, I just, yep. It's coming off. The tentative, we can go to next. Agenda item number two, tentative budget and budget workshop. So I just wanted to try to lay out some of this stuff and how it's gonna unfold, is I guess how I see it over the next month or so. You know, by September 30th, we've got to file the tentative budget with clerk. On that same day, I mean if I get it to her before then, you'll get copies before then, but by the 30th is when we have to turn that over to the clerk. So that'll be turned over to you. Paper copies will be available to the public in the office, it'll get posted on the website and links to the website on social media. I know a number of you have asked about budget workshops, so I tried to lay out when I thought we could do some. Starting with, you know, Thursday the 10th, the 17th, the 24th. We don't have to schedule these now, I mean these will be special meetings, but just, I guess, maybe check your calendar, see if those work. I'd like to keep these separate from our normal meetings, so we have like appropriate time to actually get into the budget. And then obviously the next step after that is, you know, board will make changes and then we'll have to approve a tentative budget, which will become the preliminary budget. Some stuff with, you know, with the preliminary budget, you know, public hearings basically gotta be held no later than the Thursday after Election Day, which is November 7th. We can adjourn the public hearing until November 15th. You know, we have to take into account certain public notice requirements, which are gonna have to be done. Changes can't be made to this and town board can't make changes to the preliminary until after we close the public hearing. If we need additional, you know, budget workshops, we'll just schedule them, you know, as many as we need. Town board approves the preliminary budget and then that either becomes the final budget, or if we have to make further changes, we have to have, approve that by November 20th. Usually the county wants us to send everything to them by November 20th, so really, we don't have it. I mean, I guess technically we do, but the county wants it before the last day that they're... So, you know, if we can possibly try to have that happen before then. But again, I don't know, there's so much that's up in the air with all the contracts, so we'll have to see where we land.
Do you know what time the budget workshops would be on the three Thursdays in October? Would that be 7 o'clock, like normally?
Yeah, I would, I mean unless you want to have it, I mean, look, it's open to the public, but this is largely for us, so I am gonna say now, we're gonna do it upstairs, because we're gonna have paper like spread out everywhere. So, just, I'm just saying for the public now, I just find that it works best when every board member has enough space and we can actually get into it. Because again, this workshop is for the board to work on the budget. So, yeah, I would say 7 o'clock, it'll be upstairs. Is there any questions about how I see this playing out, in terms of dates? Okay. Next, we have the benefit assessment districts, you know, these are, this is lighting, sewer, hidden Glenn drainage, all of these, you know, benefit assessment districts we have, we have to do this every year, it's a public hearing on those. You know, we'll, we'll schedule that next week as well when we do the tax cap resolution. All right, next, so let me just get into this a little bit. Next, this is the local lawn accessory dwelling units. So just before I turn this over to the board to discuss, let me just... So, you know, as you know, we've been looking at this for a couple of years now. It was, what, back in May or June, we spoke about a version that we had. There were some more, you know, sort of, not issues, but just things that board members were concerned about, so we kicked it back. And then Karen, myself, Steve, Gary, and Kristin, the planner, we met to try to come up with and, you know, try to solve some of the issues that we felt were raised. We also, because currently, the, this, this is not currently its own code section, so these have been allowed since 1987 in the town of Cornwall. They've been allowed. And so, we have a definition, that's in the definition section. But, all the regulations for these are basically in the use tables of all the residential and we just don't feel like, I mean, one, it should be more, I mean, look, we already allow it, since 1987. And it's all in here, there's really not that, there's like, what, like five bullet points of regulations for accessory dwelling units? So, for starters, whether we do anything or not, this probably deserves its own separate section of the zoning code with further clarification on what we want these to be in Cornwall. And not just in the use tables as they currently exist. So that's, for starters, what we're trying to do here is, you know, to create its own separate section. And then two, the proposed changes. We have defined what tiny homes are, as less than 500 square feet, but we're prohibiting them in the codes. We're not allowing tiny homes. But we have to define what they are before we can prohibit them. And I think you all know what a tiny home is, you've probably seen those shows on like, you know, TV or whatnot, you know what they look like, right?
It looks like a child's playhouse.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're, yeah, so we're not allowing them, we would be prohibiting them. We would, currently you can have one bedroom, we want to allow one or two bed, well, we're proposing to allow one or two bedrooms. Increase the size of, from 750 to 1,000. Now, not everyone is gonna be able to build a 1,000 square foot ADU. You're limited to 40 percent of your livable, what is it, Steve? Yes?
Local space within the home, the main home.
Yeah, so if you have a-
The level of address Dancy's trips are, so you have an 800-foot, square-foot house on Mailer Avenue or one of the side streets, they wouldn't be allowed to go up to the, whatever square foot you adopt. They wouldn't only be allowed 40 percent of the square footage of the house, which is less than half of what's there. So you have an 800-foot house, it'd be less than 400-foot addition that they would be able to do with the ADU.
It's 320 of everything, yes.
Yeah, it's 320.
So if you have an 800-square-foot house, it would be, you would be limited to 320 square feet of living space and then you would have to compare that to the New York State standard for minimum living space and see if you meet your home structure, if it is that, living space is that small, if it wouldn't even qualify to permit such a living space.
And there's a hard cap of 1,000 square feet on the top end of it.
So even if your house is 20,000 square feet, the limit is 1,000 square feet.
Yes, and then we would also allow code compliant detached accessory dwelling structures. If they have, would have to meet the bulk requirements of the zoning district. So think of it as, you know, a mother, you know, a, basically above a detached garage or an old carriage house. Those are the types of situations. I mean, we actually had a last, what was it, last Thursday? We had quite a few people that showed up that have existing carriage houses that were asking about this, that were on various properties they have. Some maybe already, you know, I, you know, maybe have to talk about it, but and we had some people with existing garages, but obviously I think one of your concerns was how do we make sure that if you have like an existing garage on your property, that is it gonna be safe or proper? Is it gonna meet the setbacks from like a neighbor's yard that's appropriate? Are you gonna be able to, you know, build on top of an existing garage? Like, how would all that work out? To me, I mean, obviously you've got the setback requirements from the bulk tables that you would have to meet on that. You've also, I guess you'd have to deal with Gary as far as, you know, could you put an apartment on top of an existing garage that building suit the use? I mean, you'd have to get past Gary on that. And then I guess, we have the, maybe I'll just let Karen go through some of her concerns, because I know you had a few specifics in here.
Yeah, and I as well.
Yeah, so the, is the initial printed proposed statute included 1,200 square feet? That's been modified, because my understanding was the proposal would be 1,000 square feet or 40 percent of the primary home's square footage, whichever is the lesser. So, so I think that there's two things going on here that didn't exist before. We're increasing the square footage by 200 and square feet, 250 square feet, that would be the maximum increase. And then, we're considering this detached garage scenario. So before, it had to be under the roof of the primary home. So you think about it, the kind of living situation that a person or a family could accept, would the other person or the other person occupying the accessory unit would have to be someone you would permit to live under your roof, right? So, that's why they always call them mother-daughters, or they're familial in nature. So, the detached aspect creates a little bit of a different policy shift because the, the structure itself is detached from the home, but the person is on your property, but they're no longer under your roof. You can't hear them, it's a different scenario, right? But, one thing I was concerned about is, is the fairness factor. So, if you live in a home that's 1,200 square feet, but you have a detached two-car garage in your backyard, basically, and it meets all of the bulk requirements, why is it that you can't build on top of your detached garage, but your next-door neighbor who has a garage right next to their home and they build some sort of breezeway or connection that is appropriate and permitted, and now they're able to build their accessory dwelling unit above their garage because of the attachment, but you are not, because you are so detached? And so, I was, I looked at this war as a fairness concern with respect to property owners. Why are we being, why are, why is the law treating them, treating people who have detached garages with single-family homes and the ordinary use, different from someone who does not? And so, like I just pointed out, obviously there's a policy shift because there's, the detachment is a a necessary consideration and it does create a different type of privacy situation, right? So, I wanted to see if we could get to a place where we could remove the disparity, but keep enough regulation in place so that it didn't run roughshod over the intent, right? So the intent of these kinds of rules is to permit people to have a close familial living situation that provides a modicum of privacy to the other family member. Maybe it's your young, young adult son or daughter who wants to remain in the home. Or it's your elderly parent who is largely self-sufficient, but requires assistance with things like groceries and going to appointments and things like that, to have them close would be good. And so, I still am thinking about and considering the legal language that has been offered. I'm, I'm really interested in hearing what the public has to say about these modifications. One thing I'm not, in its present form, I don't like the parking, the way we've addressed the parking, where it would be up to the building department to decide if there's sufficient parking on the premises for the additional accessory dwelling unit. I don't think that gives enough guidance to a department that is a compliance department. I believe that discretionary acts of government or discretion within government should rest with an elected official, not a compliance official. And if you don't give a compliance officer enough information within the statute, you, you create a situation where it might be that one compliance officer would say one thing about sufficiency and then another compliance officer would say a totally different thing. And it's really important, especially when we're talking about a person's property and their expectations for the development of their property or their use of property, that we are very clear in communicating what those expectations should be and how the development of their property in this way, if they choose to do it, would play out. And I think those are my main concerns.
Yeah, I think on the, so actually that, that would be on the parking piece, that would be a change from what we currently have. So I guess this would actually be just further making it more clear as to what the expectations are.
Well, I think parking is a very important aspect of this, because we have a lot of neighborhoods in the town of Cornwall that have very limited street parking. Either they're on a rural road where there is no side street parking and so, if you parked a car on the road, it would be a hazard. Or you have neighborhoods where, if you park a car on both sides of the street, it's really, you turn the two-way street into a one-lane street where there's a lot of yielding and giving away and there's a lot of very polite drivers in Cornwall, but also sort of sets up another safety hazard that didn't exist before. In our discussions, I know Josh and I have talked about this, I had suggested something like that you must have sufficient off-street parking to accommodate one vehicle per bedroom built in the primary home and the accessory dwelling unit. So if you have a three-bedroom home and you decide to put in a two-bedroom ADU, you would have to show proof that you had five spaces available off-street. It's an idea, I'm not saying we're resting there, I'm just saying it's gonna have to be really good, the off-street parking, because we can't have these smaller streets to become clogged with multiple vehicles that-
Especially during snow removal, I know Tommy had mentioned, you don't want to have all these cars like clogging up streets.
I just keep thinking of like pouring water on the gremlin, like it just, we're replicating and replicating and the next thing you know, the street no longer looks familiar, it looks more like a, a city street. And I know that is not-
Just not the intent, not the intent at all.
-all the intent of what, of the, of looking at this is about.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
I give pause to what the intent is, right? It's an accessory dwelling and I guess the intent is to provide maybe for a parent, you know, an elderly parent or a son or daughter coming back from college while looking for the job. That again, I don't think we need two bedrooms for that. I think one bedroom would be sufficient. And I do think, having done this myself, it is attached to my home and it's a separate entrance and I don't hear, you know, the people next door, right? Because I'm zone two family. But, I've seen other mother-daughters where it is definitely, it's attached to the building, especially for elderly person. You have the ability to actually go in and if there's a medical emergency or if they've fallen, you can, you can get to them easily, but yes, they do have their, their privacy. So, I'm understanding that's the intent of this. I'm concerned about, I guess, increasing the density of housing with this. Also, once you start with two bedrooms, you're looking at maybe families, and I think of the school district. I'm not anti-child, but that's a reality that, you know, we need to deal with. A thousand feet, if it's attached, you know, I would be all right with that, but again, I really, I'm thinking it should be attached. I want to go to, if I could, to the board, it's section 158-21. The use, supplemental use regulations. Where it comes down to number five, it says the single-family dwelling cannot be used as long-term rental property. What's the difference between short-term and long-term?
Short-term's less than 30 days.
Well, should that be delineated here?
It's delineated the short-term rental provisions in the-
Oh, okay, but if someone was looking this up, they'd have to, no, to flip back and look for that?
That's true, but if you've gone through the building-
I just think that if we're doing, are we, is the intent that the person that's doing this project is going to have everything before them, so that they're making this decision whether to actually build something? Am I correct?
Right, I understand.
All right, so my question is, this document that we're looking to edit, revise, this is something that they can look at and then go in with the building inspector and they have everything before them, but if the building inspector says, hey, and maybe you could address this, Gary, the difference between short-term and long-term rentals. I'm also concerned about vacation by rent, renter owners, like by owners, where people might rent them out as the VRBOs.
Well, they can do that.
They do it already.
Well, no, with the short, yes, they can, but with the short, with the accessory apartments, the idea is, you don't want to have somebody buy property, make it into complete rental property, where the main dwelling is rented out and the accessory apartment is rented out. Because that's just a recipe for-
Yeah, that's, that's my interpretation about-
So, here you have the owners having to reside in the property. Currently it says six months, I did not include that in this, I just thought saying that they reside and it would be sufficient. And they can rent it out, short-term, the main building, for up to 30 days periodically, because sometimes it's West Point graduation or, I don't know, maybe you're Snowbird, whatever it is, and you want to rent your property out. But I thought the fact that they owned and resided in it would be sufficient. Now, if you want to put in something saying it's their domicile, we could do that. If you want to put the six months back in, we could-
All right, this is owner-occupied, correct?
Yes, yeah.
It is.
But I mean, you could further drill down on that and say, it's not enough that it's owner-occupied, you gotta be there, as it currently says, six months out of the year, where you can say it's gotta be your domicile, which is the main place that you live. I mean, if you're concerned about that, we're certainly focusing on it. If I could say one more, I don't mean to, I'm sorry, Virginia, if you have something to say.
I'll just finish the last part, and then, all right, so if you go down to number eight, and this is, I know we're not making a decision on this tonight, but I do, as I'm reading this and you're, you're mentioning certain boards on this. As we drill down on this, it says, "All lot on which this, accessory dwelling units are established must meet the bulk requirements of the zoning district in which they are situated. Provided however, that the zoning board of appeals may grant an area variance to allow establishment of an accessory apartment on non-conforming lots." What I'm trying to say is, is that perhaps we, as we're working on this, to involve the zoning board on this, because they're gonna be faced with things that might be non-conforming. So, all I'm just saying in the process is to, I don't want this to come to the zoning board, what's, what's this? Like, I want, I want them to be knowledgeable of what's going on in this, so they can weigh in and say, well, this could happen or that could happen. And it helps us, I think, write this even more-
Is that appropriate though to involve a board, the same board that would be determining this to draft legislation?
Well, we ask the planning board for feedback, right? I'm sorry.
There's a required referral to the planning board, you certainly could do a courtesy referral to the ZBA if you want.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I guess my other question would be, would, and so, is this a section that, that has to stay in or can come out? I mean, it's like, people can always appeal to the planning, to the ZBA for an appeal, right?
Well, here's the thing, with zoning requirements, bulk reuse, you can appeal to the ZBA for a variance. There is a line of cases that says when there are special permit requirements, they cannot, then you can provision them saying they can be waived if you want in your code, but the ZBA is not entitled to vary them. You'd instead have to apply for a use variance in regard to the subject use, because that way you wouldn't be getting a special permit for it, you'd be getting a use variance. So if you want to allow somebody who has a garage that maybe is too close to the property line to be able to build an accessory apartment over theirs, the easiest way is to say, you can do that, but you gotta get a variance from the ZBA if you want to do that. If your lot's undersized, I don't know, you don't have sufficient-
That's gonna be the big one, undersized lot, that'd be the big one.
I was gonna say for the Mailer Avenue that we just mentioned.
They're all, they're all have to go to the zoning board.
Yeah, I, when I thought about that particular issue, I think about, think about like the tree streets. There's a lot of detached garages in that particular neighborhood and many of them sit on the property line.
Yes, you do.
And so, in order, if someone were to build an accessory dwelling unit above one of the garages that sits on a property line, you know, you can imagine that the quality of life for the backyard neighborhood would diminish. And I don't think that's the intent of these kinds of commensal uses of people's homes and the intent of the, of the statute. So, I would be very concerned about, very, any variances, anything that would, you know, I, when I think about detached, I think like, well, it has to be already permitted. So you already have to be able to show, I can have a two-car garage exactly where it sits. So, if that's where it sits and that's appropriate and that has all of the setbacks and all of the spacing issues are conforming, only then can you even begin to calculate your primary residence size to determine how big of an ADU you could build on the detached unit. But it has to be ancillary to the detached unit, it can't just be this, I know with the RUBCO advertising, they had pictures or diagrams that made it look like they converted a detached garage into another house.
Yeah.
That is not what we're looking for. We're just looking for ADUs that are anc- Um, we're just looking for A D U's that are ancillary to whatever the premises is. And I'm just trying to think if if we can close this disparity between people who have detached garages and people who don't do not in the calculation of this. If it can't be done, we might not get there, but I think it's worth talking about.
Yeah, no, it's it's worth the discussion.
So my concerns are, you know, obviously, a couple of things. One, I I feel very strongly that the compliance officers should do this a new job and one of many is to, you know, building code, parking, so on and so on. Parking is one of the hugest issues that we have in this town, not just on the main street, but in every single street within the town of Cornwall. Out in the rural areas and the urban areas, it's it's a mess. We're all gonna be getting bombarded with complaints from neighbors that are upcoming, I know they are, that, because they have spoken to me already and I told them the steps that they need to take. So we're gonna be expecting those complaints in the next four months from neighborhoods, not parking. Now you want to say parking for every two-bedroom person, if there are two people in one house, there's two cars, there's another two cars, that's four cars, it could be up to five cars. I I live in a pretty decent sized house, I'd be a damn two acres and stuff. And five cars, and I got nice long drive, and five cars is not good. And you know, and four cars is tough. And and then we start parking on streets in neighborhoods, you know, around, you know, Boulevard, excuse me, Boulevard, but uh, Broadway, Grand Street, the Tree Streets, all that area and stuff, it's gonna be a mess. Those, that's one concern. The other concern I have is that we still have detached uh, A D U's and stuff. And and even though it's a thirty-day mentor and stuff, New York State has very, very strong eviction laws. It's almost impossible to evict anybody at these apartments. Even though it's thirty days, I get it, and you know, and the owners who don't want these renters in there anymore and stuff have trouble getting people out. Now, I know people have never said four and three in between, but it's not. I I know, Beaverton, there are several cases out there already, not just only on eviction notices that they can't opt up, uh, post through and legally because I'm troubled with state, but also illegal mentors, you know, that are coming in and they're not following the proper code, you know, they're not, they're hooked up to the same water line, they're hooked up to the same sewer line, you know, so and so, which cannot happen, they have done those stuff. And so, now Gary knows that and stuff, so I don't even pretend to like, you know, be a code enforcement officer or a compliance officer. But these are deep concerns I have. Uh, Cornwall is not built to add add houses in people's backyards. And it's not good for the neighbors, and it's not good for the community, and that's just the way I feel. And I I I know, I I started having, I got big neighborhoods in my my area and big houses, roughly about two acres. And that's obviously in the small houses up in Baghdad, and in my house area and stuff, I probably would consider about moving. You know, and you know, you don't you don't move here so you can have like a an onslaught of, you know, houses popping up on any neighborhood, you know, and have the cars parked jamming up the streets, so two-way streets become one-way streets, you know. And 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 forget about the school system, you know, I know Councilman Scott has done that a little bit and stuff, is, you know, and that's that's something we could discuss as a school boardship, but, you know, there are some deep concerns about this. We have an A D U, does that just need to be treated a bit? Probably. But does it need to be like revamped and, you know, and for detached, I'm not born.
Can I ask one question? It just popped up when when Councilman McCarthy was talking about parking. Can can a um, potential applicant apply for parking waivers?
There's no provision in this for parking waivers, but it's not, so loosey-goosey.
Just gone down this road with Main Street, now I'm parking.
This provision just allows the code enforcement officer to decide that there's suitable parking.
Which he can currently do.
So what, so what I'm saying is, is say if they had five cars, right? They can't come and say, well, I only have room for, there's only room for four, can we get a Weaver? That's, I'm sorry, I'm just thinking about this as we've just been through this where.
You raise a really good point.
I am raising a good point, I think.
Well, if I could, just real quick, I don't.
Yes, please.
Um, to take a step back earlier though, I'll I'll come back to parking in a second.
Sure.
You you talked about the intent of of the law and, um, I mean, obviously, you're enacting it, so it's gonna mean what you intended to mean, but the way I drafted it from, you know, discussions that we had, was that it's aimed primarily, and there are other potential benefits, you talked about the the family situation and the like, primarily at addressing the lack of affordable housing um, in the area. Now, every town is different and you have different needs, you have to do what's right for Cornwall, not what's right for the Hudson Valley generally. But um, apartments in this area, and Cornwall may be more expensive, are renting for like two thousand dollars, more than two thousand, maybe just under more a month. So if you're a young person starting out, making forty thousand dollars to sixty thousand dollars in that area, to pay two thousand dollars a month for your rent is gonna take an enormous.
You're not gonna be able to do that.
Right. You can't do anything to bring rental prices down, that's beyond the town's ability. But what you can do is possibly at least make more um, lower rate apartments available. And that's one of the ideas behind allowing more accessory apartments. There's a spot where, you know, over somebody's garage, you just move back into the area and, you know, maybe you're you're working as a laborer or you're working, you know, with an entry-level job at some business and you've got limited means, but maybe volunteers, a volunteer fireman or EMS or whatever, you need a place to go. And it would be nice if you could increase that stock of housing. However, as you point out, and as Tim pointed out, as far as, there are a lot of considerations here in parking and the impacts on the aesthetic of your town are a huge consideration in this. And you gotta kind of balance, A, am I willing to do this at all? If I am willing to do this, what safeguards, conditions should there be on allowing people to do this? Because you don't have unintended consequences, like Tim's talking about, you're finding your own business, next thing you know, there's like five little Hudson people's backyards, you certainly don't want something like that.
Which I think we actually.
Oh, no, we tried to address it, Josh.
Address, I mean, I think.
It's just an example of unintended consequence. So one of the things Josh and I had talked about briefly was the possibility of doing this as a special permit, instead of having it go through the building department. You talked about involving the Z B A, well, you you could have it go through the Z B A, you could have it go through the planning board, you could have it go through the town board if you wanted. That's very different from what I've laid out in this draft of a law. But if you're concerned about maintaining control over how these things are developed, you may wanna vest the authority to grant it in one of your permitting boards than instead of leaving it in the building department. Not that the building department doesn't do a fine job, they do, but it's more structured if you have it go before a permit.
I I also would like to, there's there's people and I've spoken to who think, oh, if I build this, it will, you know, I, it will help me pay my tax bill. And I'm like, yeah, well, the moment you start putting the structures up, your property is going to be reassessed and your taxes are going to go up.
That's, so actually, let me address that.
My point. I've spoken to people who are doing, building apartments right now at this very moment. And when I asked them, oh, are you going to make it affordable? And they're like, no, I've invested, you know, hundreds of hundreds of thousands of dollars in this, I I can't do this, this is a business. We just did the um, the Cornwall town, the town homes, remember the apartments? That was the first question I asked the the developer, are you going to make them affordable or market value? Guess what? Market value. I mean, people, it's a business. I I I really, I understand the intent and I think it's very kind to to think that there's gonna be lower things, but I just don't see this, and I'm just, I'm I'm really concerned with the unintended consequences.
So, alright, so I wanna address some of these. So first off, um, the, there is a new state law now that allows towns to exempt accessory dwelling units from increased assessed value to their homes. You just have to opt into it, that's new, so you actually could, so that is something we could do.
What?
It's a, it's a new provision where, let's say you build an accessory dwelling unit, the the town, we have to, the, what is it, Home Rule situation where we have to?
It is a Home Rule situation, I don't remember if it's permanent or if it's only for a certain number of years though.
Oh, so then they would have to go back, just like when, when the one apartment got the tax lien for ten years and then you're back to full market.
Yeah, so, so it's.
Does that includes, is that just the town taxes and other school district taxes?
Every district has to opt in.
Every district, yeah, it's similar to like, like all of these things, right? So you gotta like.
So if the school district didn't opt in, that would be too much of a break for anybody since they.
Well, I'm just, yeah, this is, but it's, it's available though, as as an option that got passed. I mean, look, as far as the um, I think all of these things can kind of be worked out. I don't think that everything has to be cut, personally, I don't think this is gonna be an invasion of Cornwall as some people out there in the community think is going to happen if we do this. If we do this thoughtfully, in a thoughtful way, and don't go back to how Cornwall acted decades ago, I'm not even gonna bring up some of the stuff we did decades ago. But I think if we act in an appropriate way as a community and we figure out a right way to do this that can benefit seniors and families and, you know, like the reason why you might need like a ti, like a second bedroom is like, let's say your son and daughter are moving back and they wanna save to buy a house and you need a nursery and you, and like maybe mom and, you, I'm just saying, I mean, that would have been, you know, convenient, you know, for my situation. And so you have all these different family needs. We also didn't talk about the idea of, you know, do you limit this? Some places, you know, limited to families. And then the question becomes, who's in a family? So I guess, you know, would you be, feel better if we, you know, limited it to? But I would be very concerned about how we define family, so.
I think that's a tricky.
Well, I know, but that's the way it's being presented to the public and and then it's really not. And um, I I I think again, I I'm saying that it's it's um, a lofty goal or idealist, but I mean, ultimately, I I just think that I'm I'm very concerned about the unintended consequences of of this. And um, you know, we're not even thinking of the school district, but once I saw two bedrooms, I am thinking that. Because that's the nature of 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 like the people, you know, I get it. And um, I always like to struggle like that with the, as a young family, so I do, I do empathize, but um.
Well, you know, on the school district front, I would just add that we should look at the rest of the Hudson Valley and how they're losing school population and selling school buildings and we actually, yes, now, but, you know, we wanna make sure that we keep our population up and of of and and keep seats in schools because we know that that is probably in future years, schools at some point are gonna be funded based on the level of population they have. We wanna make sure that our population in the schools remains stable or is slightly growing so that there is no attempt to cut our school funding based on population decreases in school size. So I I'm just saying that to me is also a policy consideration as well.
But I mean, I actually heard all of, uh, five of you, um, I share similar sentiments. My reservations and concerns actually are primarily, uh, every family has a different budget. So when you drive through Cornwall or Cornwall-Hudson, there's a unity that we see overall over the houses. You don't see anything out of proportion or look kind of weird in in sense of building. And I'm not even an architect or anything, a designer. So my um, my reservation is that, uh, concern is that um, by allowing to have a granny flat or what we might wanna call, it will eventually, if there's a lot of requests, it will change the look of our town, like everywhere you drive, like everybody knows where I live. If I wanna, um, dete, if I put a detached garage that I have, change it, it's gonna go into the neighbor's yard. Like, it's gonna look a little weird, to say the least, this is my house. So that's my reservations about, um, it has to be really calculated and studied. Of course, we have the building department, zoning board, planning board and us, I think. It it could be done, but it has to be very, very, you know, carefully taught and um, studied.
Yeah, I mean, I, um, so what I would ask is that, um, I think I have an idea of what some of the concerns are. Look, some of them are just gonna be, you know, some of you are just just wholeheartedly not gonna agree with the detached and like, that's okay, I mean, you don't have to agree with that, you don't have to support this. But I think we have to like, you know, do the best we can to get this to where it's gonna go and then decide, but you know, before we take a vote on this, what is, you know, gonna.
Hear from the public.
Well, of course, so the next step is to actually, and I do think that we should send, I don't think it makes any sense to pull out detached until we hear what the public has to say. And if the public is just totally, we're not for it, then it comes out. But, you know, we should have a public hearing on a bill. And look, we can make some minor tweaks to this, but I do think we need to know how the public, because I've heard from people that are all for detached, have no issues with it, so I think.
Can I ask Jerry a question? Jerry, in its existing form with the seven hundred and fifty square feet foot limit and the forty percent, whichever is the lesser, how many applications do you get to build these accessory dwelling units, say, every year?
I'm working on a housing report study with Josh. I went back five years. And in the five years, we had thirty-eight new housing units. Of the thirty-eight, three were A D U's.
So three in the last five years.
Of the thirty-eight. Now, keep in mind, last large subdivision in town was Tohale, where Mike lives.
Yeah.
There is no current subdivision of any more than five lots going on right now in town. There are four, five, six lot subdivisions throughout the town, but they're not currently building. Does that help you with?
Yes, that answers my question, thank you.
Now, I would also like to throw, what I wanted to get earlier. When we first adopted accessory dwelling units regulations, it was, when it was first adopted, it was an approval special permit from the planning board. The very first one I had to deal with was a house on Erie Court. Homeowner had built an apartment. However, on Erie Court, two family houses weren't allowed. So they went for the accessory dwelling unit approval. And the time that it took to get through the planning board process, because a part of the special permit of the planning board, they had to have a public hearing. It took like three months for an approval. Then after they got their planning board approval, then I could go in and do my things. So the town changed the regulation based upon the time it took that applicant and gave it to the building department to handle, to try and speed up the process. And reduce the burden, because there's significant cost when you have to go before the planning board. Does that help you? Did I answer your question?
Absolutely, and and then some, thank you.
But it started out at being a special permit used with the planning board.
And now we all know where my goes.
And we all do. No, we all knew that beforehand.
So it sounds like, I mean, three over five years is not, I mean, would this maybe cause a couple additional to be built a year? Uh, you again, I don't know, we have no way of knowing, we have no way.
Way to know, right? And I think that is the concern. So if you're lifting the restrictions as they are and they, and you're easing some of the stored footage and especially the second bedroom, it sounds like those, that is the the biggest concern that I hear coming in, in the parking, of course.
I I definitely, I agree with Councilman McCarrazi is the fact that if you look to the neighborhoods, there, it's conforming and then the more, the moment you change it. And many people that move in here, they move here for.
The character, yeah.
So, I could, for saying that, actually, thank you.
Yeah, and if you, e- even if you did some tweaks to this and and pulled the detached out of it, if it's still under the primary home's roof, you probably would have less likelihood of seeing any sort of character of the neighborhood changing.
Yeah, I mean, I, and it's.
So this is why I wanted to have this discussion, because I wanted to hear like, can we do detached? Can we not do, how do we do this if we're gonna do it, what's it look like?
I'm just, I'm of two nice homes that have attached dwellings or any beautiful areas and out in the country and I, and I, in the current time, out in the country a little bit. And it works for them. My only concerns are unfortunately, they're not meant to have affordable mates, you know. So how do you get to what Josh is looking to do and ask get to, you know, affordable mates for for people who are less fortunate, you know, that moved, college kicked them out of school or senior citizens and stuff? You know, I know there's some plans way in the future that may answer those questions. But I don't, I don't discuss right now, but but that's down the road, you know. But but this this thing here, I don't think is is a hundred percent the answer.
Many of the one-bedroom apartments in Cornwall, they're going for anywhere between thirteen hundred and two thousand dollars for one bedroom.
For one bedroom. And it's, and there's, and also, I know several in Beaverton from being a five-better there, and so if they know, several, you know, illegal apartments aren't going for fifteen hundred and higher, and then by code, you know.
Okay, so there is.
So I, look, I think it's a, it's gonna be important to hear from the public, um, you know, maybe another round of looking at, you know, the language, you know, to your point about, you know, some of, you know, I call them the tree and nut streets or mailer or elsewhere. Look, I mean, certainly, I don't know how many of those are gonna get through the Z B A, but then there's areas that, out in the country that, so really, it's gonna, like. So really, it's gonna like certain neighborhoods, you're only gonna be able to build on the part of the house. In other areas, you're gonna be able to do detached. So I I I just, I think we've gotta hear from, you know, the public and I mean, talk about this a little. I'm not looking to like jam this through, so. I'm looking to like have a discussion with the community about this.
Would you mind to put put this back on to another work session day so we have a good month? To talk to Gary. I I wanna know a little bit more about some of the requirements with respect to even establishing a detached garage. So I understand how this law might link into that in some way to cause the restrictions. If we already have them in place, why duplicate it into another statute?
I'll put it on for October. Look, I never thought this was gonna, I thought.
Cause I'm thinking like if you're like some of these old garages in the nineteen thirties and you're gonna try to build something, then then.
Well, that's a structural.
But I understand like some of the people, there was a couple people in Cornwall that came to the seminar. At hundred twenty-five thousand dollars with an engineer goes very fast.
Oh, sure.
Sewer, di- digging a separate sewer line, that's a borderline. That money is going fast. So it really kind of makes it unattainable for them as well.
I have to follow up too and see how um I should know in the next week or so, how many applications got put into RUCO for this.
The environmental impacts.
Oh, I agree with the previous, I I've spoke to you about.
That's another um for you session.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, put on another work session, maybe more people another time would be good to hear from you.
Alright, so.
Discussion will spark more ideas or information, yeah.
Yeah, I really don't wanna come with this document and say, okay, we're gonna have a public hearing next, you know, I I I just don't think that's fair. Cause this is something that really could alter our community.
Sure. So maybe the October work session, we can revisit.
Yeah, that's where I'm putting it. Okay, so next we have a resolution for the emergency watershed protection program assurances. So you know how on Hasbrook and over on Clara Drive, we have um this. Basically, it's a home buyout program. In order for us to proceed any further into cooperation agreements, we have to pass. This resolution with assurances, which will allow the USDA to release funds. Or reimburse the town for appraisals that it's gonna have to do on the properties in question. So that this is just something we have to do. And then there's a whole bunch of paperwork that Megan and I have been like filling out, just like federal paperwork that we have to. Fill out, submit with this. And then once that goes in, then we can, we gotta talk further about the appraisal piece too.
Yeah, I don't know how you wanna handle that. We'll have to uh I think just circulate a memo to the board or something.
So that's that. Uh bond council, so um Hawkins, Dellafield reached out to us and. They want us, you know, so I guess we looked back at our reorg meeting and they want us to formally appoint them as the town's bond council. For I just like for whatever reason, they wanna be formally appointed. So they've asked us to do that, so at the meeting next week, we're just gonna formally appoint them.
It's just approving the retainer letter.
Exactly, it's approving the retainer letter. Yeah, we've been working with them for, geez, decades, right?
The terms are the same.
Yeah, terms are the same, everything's the same. They just want it, you know, formal. Um next is the Orange County Multi Jurisdictional Multi Hazard Mitigation Plan. So last week, uh Tommy and I and Kurt went out to the Emergency Operations Center, I believe um. Tim, I think, joined um remotely and I don't know if the 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 police chief joined. But basically, what has to happen is the the town's part of the county's multi jurisdictional plan. And in order to get public assistance and be eligible for FEMA hazard mitigation grant funding and all of this stuff, you have to have to have one of these in place. The counties expires at the end of the year and. So um and it's possible, this is also holding up the the Mudna Creek Embankment Project, so. Well, yeah, so they so basically, it looks like they may have been told that. The, you know, fee, you know, they basically said, you gotta get this in place before we finalize and allow you to sign the contract for that. So the county's gotta get this in place and of course, cause we're part of the multi jurisdictional plan, we actually, we're gonna be meeting in the next. Kurt's gonna be putting together a meeting of stakeholders because um the county gave us homework that we have to get back to them. Um and so it's gonna be fire departments, police departments, the village will be involved, we'll have uh police department, highway, um. Tim, our engineers, the building department, um we gotta answer these questions. Yeah, quickly, although, yeah, so look, we're gonna do our best. I, you know, they said, uh what was it, by the twenty-seventh of September, they want this back for? Yeah, it was kind of, yeah, yeah. So we're gonna do our best. Uh we only met last week.
Yeah. Exciting thing is anything new event where there's been two or more events in that area, we can add to our hazard mitigation.
We have like quite a bit, yeah, we have some stuff to update for this. Yep, so alright, let me get. I'm gonna just, because let me see, we got a couple people here, maybe we go to the, yeah.
The town had a hazard mitigation committee. There's all kinds of people you're talking about.
Correct, it's it's the same people.
The fire districts.
It's the same people.
But we did have a town committee on that.
We do, but it's.
Correct.
Yeah, so so Kurt's, well, some of those people have changed, so we're just gonna, we're just going back through to make sure we have everybody.
They also had a town cons- uh consultant from China that did what the uh Stu Turner.
I don't know.
Yeah, they had a a he brought actual broke the plan for it.
I believe, yeah, but see, but that's when we did it on our own. Now we're part of the counties and so we just have to to update, we have to answer the questions that the county wants.
And give it to the.
Yeah. Alright, so facilities use policy, um. Yeah, let me just here. Alright, does everyone have, here, let me just give, these are, that's Mrs. Scott's. This is. Um and then. The one that I have in the packets, that's the one that. Okay. So, um, we have the one version that um Councilmember Scott worked on. And we have the other version that was basically a red line of Karen, Josh and others input into it, which you have in the package. Um and so basically, I mean, I'm just, you know, speaking for myself on this, um, you know. I think, you know, my goal is to, how do we, I think the town board really should only be approving things that are. You know, mass gatherings, alcohol, larger type events that, you know, would require more town resources. Um, you know, that would require town board approval and that, you know, we should sort of let our departments and our staff, you know, do their job. Um, I don't know that I want the town board to be approving everything, every event, every activity that comes before. You know, that um and then we should let the clerk's office take the lead on this, um, you know, and then. Obviously, there are gonna be cer- you know, so like if you go through this, um. Certain things like, look, look, Sandrine Homestead, I think we agree that that should be a town board determined, you know, who can use it, certain groups can use it. Um, the Girl Scout cabin, you know, the Girl Scouts should use that, right? Um, but then when we, you know, and then maybe mass gatherings, but then when we get to everything else, like Munger Cottage, Little League, those types of things. That should just be, you know, someone makes an application to the clerk, you know, we have a very good form. Clerk determines if it passes a certain threshold, it then gets sent over to the town board, cause it's a mass gathering or it requires special. You know, it it requires police or road closures or some other type of thing that's, you know. And then that's sort of where we leave it. Um, that's that's my personal feeling. That we should let the town staff do most of this, only have the town board approve like mass gathering, races, road closures, alcohol, like that that type of. Bigger type of stuff, um, um, yes.
Yeah, fine, okay. So the whole intent was of this, it's just, this is not anything having really uh. The town employees and making them do more, um, but we we did take input from um our buildings and grounds. We did, I know I I did take input from the town clerk in Munger Cottage and I agree. Um, I get get a calendar every month of what's going on in Munger Cottage, that's fine. The whole intent of this is to clearly just give, just like we have an employee handbook. Here's a handbook for potential people who want to use town facilities, people who have never used it before. Um, I also suggest the building department, they put a lot of their forms and information online. You could have the clerk's form online, so people can fill it out, they know what's here, they bring it to the clerk. I'm looking to streamline this. But I also think that people need to understand, who don't understand the history of the town. You know, I don't wanna see Ameri- the American Legion being rented out for, you know, a face painting event. Or I don't wanna see Sands Ring being misused. That was really the intent of this. Um, and um I think as a board member, I agree, I don't want to be voting on everything. The Girl Scouts are amazing and they call all the time. Um, that wasn't the intent. The intent was, this is really a document. Um, in the past, since I've been on the board, there has been questions where, you know, oh, you know, you're not being fair to us. And no, here's the policy, here's the procedure. So I'm I'm looking at this totally different. This is not to make anyone's life more complicated at town hall. This is really for the user, so that they understand and it applies to everyone. And that's the whole idea of of this document. Um, I looked at this document, it seems, Councilman Ed Henrys. You you basically took some of the things that I had here and you, did you incorporate them in here?
Um, I guess.
Cause the language that I have here.
Yes, yes.
Right, so the language I've had here, I see it gets in here, so. And that that was the whole point of this, and if if you look at this. This all does run through the town clerk. They fill out a a form and if the town clerk feels that it's necessary. You bring it to the attention of the town board. So that that's the intent of this document. Um, I just want a resolution to this. I want a policy so that people know what they are, they can apply to the clerk and this this works seamlessly. And that people understand the use of, you know, as people are moving in, they don't understand what Sands Ring Homestead is. They don't know what the Legion is. Or the Girl Scout cabin, oh, this is a little red building, let's go, you know, have a party. So that was the point of this, so um.
So do you, in in reviewing the submission by Supervisor Wojciechowski, does this incom- incorporate sufficiently?
It looks like there were things from my documents that were added into it.
So we took some and then yours though had some stuff that I still felt, we looked at what you sent and it still had some stuff that made it sound like a lot was coming to the town board. And so we wanna get to a.
No, 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 no. So, cause like if you look at the background on top, I thought I really um tried to to flesh that out, you know, again. Um, except regular and ordinary use, right? So the regular and ordinary use will go through the town clerk. It's the events that are different.
Per- perhaps one one thing I could point out, and we talked about this, was it under your sub- your um number four Munger Cottage. Except for programs or activities held or sponsored by the town, no use shall be made among Munger College by the public. Except upon prior prior approval of the town board once vetted. So.
Once vetted by the town clerk, correct.
Well, when I read that, I I maybe just the language or the syntax, like my concern was that. It unless it was some sort of town committee, town employee, town something. Um, it would have to come through here and I I definitely don't want that. We have the rec desk, we have ways in which to deal with. The ordinary use of Munger Cottage, the meeting club or whatever.
I agree with you. It was, once it was vetted by the town clerk, the town clerk would bring to us like, hey, this this is something that's not typically.
Majority of groups that use Munger, they're not, you know, town um sponsor.
But they fill out the form for you and if there's a red flag or something, you would bring it to our attention. I I totally understand that.
Okay, yeah.
So I I think we're in agreement, I just think that, again, I just wanted a policy for users to have.
Absolutely.
That they know, especially people who are new to the community, don't don't understand. School bo- by the way, school districts do this, so I guess my, I apologize if this sounds like it's redundant, but the school districts do this. For people that wanna use the building all the time and the school board does approve.
Um, can we, can we just talk about mass gatherings?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I I would, in my initial suggestion, I was saying fifty or a hundred in the which you discuss. But when I think about gatherings in excess of fifty, I think that's a nice. Um, threshold instead of a hundred. If it's fifty, then it's more likely that there would be an involvement of some sort of public resource. One one thing or another, if it's buildings and grounds for trash removal or something.
Right.
Um, but I don't know, I don't know, but I feel like a hundred is a lot. Before we're tricked, before we're triggered in terms of being involved.
I guess the chief, like what would you, like what number would you?
Yeah, it's fifty, like exactly like you said.
Yeah.
Okay.
Seventy-five and a hundred is not much of a difference for what you need.
Once you get to fifty.
Right.
Right, exactly.
Is that an okay change?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't know the right amount, that's kind of a, should be an informed.
You're gonna put a number to it?
Yeah, fifty.
Yeah, fifty.
So you're saying when Cricket has their day and they have more than fifty people there, it has to go through the board for a permit?
And I think we did, we approved it.
Yeah, I think it's important that that some, especially the all-day events, that you think you're gonna have many, many, many people. So that we can address some of the um the traffic, pedestrian and vehicular that would go through, in that case, Laurel Crest. It's, you know, it's a neighborhood that happens to have a giant park and if they're gonna have an influx of more than fifty people. Um, they should know about it. And so if it comes to us, then they know about it or they have an opportunity to. Um, and so so will you and your department and the police and.
I gotta say, the clerk's office does a great job. If there's anything that comes through, we know about it. And if we mess up, we hear about it.
Well, that's not why I'm suggesting it, but I I think one of the mass gatherings um came up in relation to.
Fall festival.
Fall festival application, because there were going to be road closures and there was some initial disagreement with respect to road closures. Which prompted me to ask OEM to come become involved. And then there was a meeting by OEM with all of the involved departments and you guys participated. And I thought that it was a wonderful outcome, that everyone felt included, especially the fire department. The fire department um needs to be included in these things. If there's a road closure, they have to know about it. They have very specialized apparatus that doesn't turn around like a car. Um, they have to be told that these things are happening and they should weigh in. So. I I love how that played out. I'd like to see us use our OEM more often to bring all of the interested parties together. Um, so that a a good strategic first responder plan comes out of those meetings. Because when you have this many people in our tight streets, there needs to be a plan, in my mind.
Just so we know like, you know, where where we're at, so. Brenda Goldfarb calls and the library wants to hold a musical in Munger and they have ninety-five guests, that's over fifty people, that's a mass gathering that goes through you guys. Cause that does happen often.
Ninety-five people for a.
I don't think, what's the capacity that goes?
Inside the.
So for a hundred.
Is this a hundred? I guess I've never really counted.
I think it might, I think it might actually be right around a hundred.
Isn't that fire code in there?
That gets to a different question. If it's a, if it's on, if it's like a town facility or property and it's it's below the maximum occupancy, does that require a mass gathering plan?
No, I wouldn't think so. I I guess when I think about that, I think outdoor, I think outdoor.
Yeah, yeah, thinking more.
So long as they're not violent or fire.
Fifty-one quilters this month, we gotta do a.
D one. Those racks are too big for fifty-one.
Yeah, but this this is really for the person who says, hey, I wanna have this tournament. And they're like, well, how come I can't do it? It's like, well, because there's a procedure that you need to follow. That's what this is about. This is not about like counting.
No, no, I can.
A particular road closure map and that map has not yet been, you know. Uh reviewed by interested parties that would otherwise close roads or be need to be aware of road closures, so. It's it's not to punish anyone, it's really to try to.
Cause people want it now. It's gonna have to be Munger, and how we're gonna have to figure that out, as far as.
Well, Mun- Mun- Munger works pretty much.
Well, I think you said if it's under the maximum occupancy, and it's.
Yeah, right, but I, I just think new organizations that wanna use it. Right, but like Tommy said, we do.
We could make a caveat, so long as it works a while, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, we had the comedian coming, remember? We had pretty, I think, with, there were a hundred people there. The, the comedian came at the Munger Cottage?
Yeah, it just happened, like, a month ago, and so she had a comedian come in, the place was packed.
Yeah, it was packed. That's run by the recreation, like, that program was ran by the recreation department, so.
Under city, house program.
Exactly.
I, I don't think mass gatherings are contemplative of indoor.
Right.
Yeah, we're thinking like fairs, festivals, races.
Yes. The only thing I wanna add, and I'm glad you brought up the point, when we're closing roads and things like that, we really do need to be mindful, I've spoken to some store owners, and when we close some of these roads, sometimes it does interfere with their ability to do business, especially if they're delivering food, and they can't get out because the road is closed right in front of the property. So I think we need to, to tweak that. And the other thing is, when we hold these, some of these road closings on Sunday, we're interfering with houses of worship, and we really need to be careful of that as well. So, I guess that's another reason why some of these things should be coming before the town board, so that we, we, we.
Yeah, we.
Yeah.
We, we.
I think what we, the way we resolved, at least the most recent one, was, I, I felt like the first step is for, is first responders. So the first res- once the first responders weigh in on a plan, or, you know, variances of plans that they would accept, then, then you have to go, it's in the case of the house of worship, it's a First Amendment right to practice your religion.
Absolutely.
And the, the houses of worship, in my mind, should never be closed during their normal operations, or impeded in any way.
That's why I think of that.
And so, I, I think that was addressed by the first responders' information, and what their outlook was on the road closure. So it became a non-issue fairly quickly, at least in that particular case. So, I don't, I don't think anyone means to trample on anyone's rights, but.
But they need to know, and it's a surprise to them when they, they're finding out from people that are not town officials. And I think that was the thing, like, like, that's why we do need to be in the know.
Well, I don't think there was any mal-intent.
No, 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 I'm just saying, you need to, like.
I understand. I think we, everybody learned a lot from that particular application, and I think it's just only gonna get better.
Yeah.
And so, so just, just based on one thing, so let's talk about, because the good stuff that we missed in the events, and one of the things we're missing is that, I love the streamline, but I wanna make sure that we, in our town, make sure that the Friends of Sands Ring are very involved with anything that's happening there, because there's a lot of fire back.
Right.
That cannot be damaged, because it's historical, our, 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 another value. The other thing that's really, really important, is that the American Legion, the American Legion, our personnel there, our, the, the whole staff needs, especially the commander and his staff needs to be advised of anything that may go outside of their actual meetings, and be advised, because they have some very sensitive items in that building, and, you know, so we need to be careful with that. Those are two of the main points I wanna bring up.
Yeah, I would.
So I guess we could, we could add in some language that requires their, their approval as well. The friend, if you're going to use.
Especially those two.
I can't imagine someone wanting to use either of those buildings to some sort of private.
Well, but I would, I would, the only thing I would say about the Friends of Sands Ring, and I would be, they, so, there's times that will work, if we have an active committee, and there's gonna be regular meetings, and they can get to get. So how would that work? Would they have to vote to approve an event, or it's just that we let them know? Like, what would the?
What, the Friends of Sands Ring has an executive leadership, right?
Yeah.
So then we have.
Paul, contact the person.
Um, the town owns Sands Ring, if you wanna consult with them regarding the decisions taken, that's fine.
I think it's like we let them know, but it's like, I don't think they get like a yay or nay over a.
I don't know, but, but because, because the, what's in the building, and what they have, and that stuff, I think.
I think.
Especially still have the property coming in.
Notice beforehand an opportunity to comment, and I'm, I'm confident whoever's on the board at the time will, if they think it's danger to, you know.
That's, that's what I'm gonna say.
And the last thing that I add was, the, the reason I add Little League is because I did have complaints from even some of the membership of Little League, that there were groups that were on, they were basically on the property, they were running different games, and, you know, these people in Little League, I respect tremendously. I know they do a lot of work on that field, and, and that's why Little League is on that particular thing. They should be notified if, if another group is going to be using it, like, just like Sands Ring, they should be consulted.
Okay, so, yep, we can move on.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, so, trees at traffic circle and veterans monuments?
Or Mr. Andrew.
I, I'm sorry, I'm very sorry. So, do you wanna give what you found out about the?
Yeah, Tom and I took a look at the tree at the traffic circle last week. It's a white spruce, it's a native tree to the area. It is suffering from a disease called Weir's cushion rust, or it's also known as spruce false needle cast. It has, it has two different names. It's a fungal pathogen, it occurs every year. It is a chronic problem, it cannot only be treated once, and then you don't have to worry about it anymore. So, i- if the town were to keep the tree, which I'm not suggesting that the tree be replaced, in order to keep it looking good, it would need to be treated annually. In addition, there's a minor outbreak of spider mite on the tree, probably due to all the rain we had this year, that would need to be treated once, and then probably never need treatment again for the next ten years or so. Treatment can be done through a series of sprays, it's typically three or four sprays done in the early spring, about two to three weeks apart. Or it can be treated once a year via an injection into the trunk. As far as the planting grade of the tree, the tree is planted at the correct depth. However, the soil immediately surrounding the tree does dish down, but no soil should be added to, to the base of that tree whatsoever. The disease was present in the Hudson Valley when the tree was planted, but it was not commonly known by many horticulturalists. So, in order to, to keep the tree, and keep the tree looking good, that's something that the, the town would need to consider doing. The Village of Washingtonville just started treating their tree for the same exact reason, for the same exact problem, this year, so. That's it on that tree, if anybody has any questions about the tree at the circle.
What about, so I also have, Tommy had said something about the tree being, being planted with the metal basket and burlap still on it.
Yes. And I said to Tom, I've never found a tree in the woods with a metal cage growing around it, or burlap around the roots. That's more involved to correct, the proper way to correct that is to come in with, have a contractor come in with a tool called an air spade, which is, uses supersonic compressed air to remove dirt without damaging the root system, cutting away as much of the cage as possible, and then backfilling with, with soil again. That, that would be a one-time expense.
Tommy?
Is that necessary? That's for now.
Yes.
Is it necessary in our lifetime? No. We want our grandkids to be looking at that same tree and not replacing it every fifteen or twenty years? Yes.
Okay.
To be, like, I, I've seen a lot of new growth, like volunteer, that's a goal a lot. So, there's a, like, it seems like it's, like it's bounced back from the drought. Can we just, I, I, before we go down there and, I, I wanna say trauma, add trauma to the tree, and start digging things up again, should we just monitor it and see if?
By, by the time you see anything, it's too late to correct.
Okay.
So, I can reach out to, I, I really only know two contractors in the area that have that tool.
Okay.
I can reach out to them and get a ballpark, right?
Would you recommend that in the spring, like, with?
Anytime.
Yeah, I don't think it should be.
Not, not the middle of the summer, when it's hot, but spring, fall, even winter, if the ground isn't frozen, it can be, it can be done.
All right, something to think about.
So, it, it can be, everything can be accomplished in less than, what, let's say, in one day.
Okay.
The, the town may also want to consider, since there's going to be an annual maintenance cost associated with that tree, plus correcting the, the cage and burlap situation, the town may want to consider replacing the tree, rather than continuing to maintain this one. The sooner you replace the existing tree, if that's the route anybody wants to go, the sooner a sizable tree will be existing in that location. I'm not recommending that, but it's not my mind.
Sure, now we understand that.
So.
Okay.
Okay. While we were chatting about the traffic circle, we started to talk about the one tree in the veterans monument that mysteriously happened to die in about July-ish, and Angelo noticed it on his own also, and. So, I, I have been watching the trees be replaced, one, two, I think one year, three trees had to be replaced, and if anybody has noticed at the Veterans Memorial Park, the trees get to about the same height, and then they rapidly go from looking great, to looking like somebody threw gasoline on them and set them on fire. The trees are suffering from a disease called verticillium wilt. It is a soil-borne pathogen, fungal pathogen, and it clogs the vascular system of the trees. The list of trees that are susceptible to it is extensive. The most susceptible trees to this disease in New York State are sugar maple and red maple, which historically, we have had sugar maples in, in that park to, to represent the state tree of New York. If anybody's unaware, there's thirteen trees planted around the triangle, thirteen trees represent the thirteen Civil War veterans when the park was dedicated, and sugar maple was selected because it was the state tree of New York. The only way to do away with the disease, the, the disease is not readily treatable. Treatments work at forestalling the inevitable, that they, eventually you will be changing the trees on a regular basis anyway. To remove the disease would entail removing all of the trees, removing all of the soil until bedrock or an impervious layer was reached, and backfilling with new soil, that may or may not contain the disease in it anyway. So, the disease is very common, it is, you, you can go into any forested plot, dig up a coffee can-sized pump of soil, send it out to Cornell, and they will say, yes, you have verticillium wilt in that, in that soil.
Jeez.
So, the strategy is often to select, where the disease becomes really problematic, is you select a tree as a replacement that is not susceptible. That creates the problem of, there's always been sugar maples there, or at least maples, there was a couple of Norway maples there for a while as well. And then it also creates the problem of, if the decision was made to change to a different species of tree there, do you change them one at a time? Do you change them all at once? Which tree would be an appropriate size? Because there are wires, maples are not an appropriate tree species to be planting there in the first place. When those trees were planted, there were not wires growing.
Makes sense.
So, I mean, some of the trees that would work well there, in my opinion, would be dogwoods, whether it's a, a hybridized American dogwood, which is resistant to the fungal problem that that has, or a Cusa dogwood, which we have a lot of those growing right here around Town Hall as well. Cusa dogwood is not a native tree, though, so. Hop horn bean is a small shade tree, it has a nice form, it's generally vase-shaped. Hackberry is a slightly larger tree, again, native tree, nice vase form. Red bud also, I feel like. Red bud is susceptible to, for verticillium. And then, hawthorns or crab apples, if you wanted a, a. The decision was, let's go with a smaller tree, that might be a little bit more showy, and has flowers. Those would be some of the options. Crab apples have probably more disease issues than any other tree that's commonly planted. So, hawthorn is slightly less. Obviously, the decision about replacing the trees lies far beyond being, I just figured.
So, Angelo, has the, has the soil actually in that triangle, has it been tested? Cause I know, like, when I consulted through one tree, it was actually, I know it's disease that's there, but the nutritional issue. Have we tested the soil?
We have not. Nutritional testing will not, any nutritional deficiencies will, correcting those will not correct the problem.
Right, cause when you were trying to take me out all the soil, that's why I was asking, like, why, why go.
So verticillium wilt, what it does is it clogs the vascular tissues in, I know you know.
He's like, oh, I'm sorry, it's like the hard, hard.
It clogs the vascular tissues in a tree, and the vascular tissues are just a bundle of straws that conduct water and minerals up, and food down. And when we have a really dry year, since water is in short supply and the tubes are partially clogged, it makes it very difficult for water to get up to the top. When we have a very wet year, it allows the disease to grow faster, and clogs the tubes even faster. So unless we have a Goldilocks year, you're gonna see impacts of it. It takes a certain number of years before the disease is ingrained in the tree enough that it's gonna die, which is why the trees will look good for three or four years after they've been planted, and die very quickly. And the time that it died this year was directly associated with the first temperature spike that we had this summer.
All right, so it sounds like we have a lot to, yeah, I really appreciate this.
Um, neither of them are easy decisions to make, they require some discussion. There is nothing that needs to be done immediately, either. Treatment of the spruce wouldn't occur until the spring. There is one treatment that could be done this fall, it could be done just as easily in the spring.
Okay.
If anybody has any other questions.
Do we have time to think about it and see, consider budget impacts, too?
And decorating the tree this year, will it have further impact?
Yeah, we were wondering.
Christmas lights.
Christmas lights.
Angelo, the, and not removing, not having had, removed the wiring, do you think primarily was because it was easier to just dump it in the hole? What was the reason you think that, that wire was not removed before planting?
I don't know. I know historically, burlap was not removed, because it would biodegrade in two to three years. Burlap is now treated with a fire retardant, not because they're afraid of it burning, but it slows the decay process. So if a tree is in burlap in a nursery for multiple years, it doesn't rot. So that's kinda changed, people have been leaving cages on for many decades, and arborists have been correcting those problems for, for just as long.
And if I remember correctly, it did mention in Tom's email, that the surface, the level of the soil was supposed to be a little higher where they planted?
Ideally, the whole planting hole should have been raised higher, but where the tree is sitting in the planting hole, or in the surrounding grade, is correct, right now. When you're planting big trees, if you overdig the hole just a little bit, and then backfill it and compact it, the weight of that tree rocking over time digs, it digs itself into the ground further. So, I, I wouldn't fault anybody for that aspect of the plant.
Okay, thank you, Angelo.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, so next up we have, and this is, you know, not on for a full board discussion. I put this on because we've spoken about, you know, looking at the sewer IMAs with the Village of COH, and the shore road plan, and the village collection system, and I know from talking to council here, Steve had recommended that we might consider looking at getting, what, some kind of consultant to look at this?
Yeah, I have two firms who, I've been meaning to provide you the names forever, I came across them like this today, as a matter of fact, Josh. That look at sewer rates and water rates, and they crunch the numbers, and they tell you where you think, where they think you should be. That look at sewer rates and water rates and they crunch the numbers and they tell you where you think, where they think you should be. I'm not saying we're out and hire them, but I think it'd be a good idea to interview them and see what you think about it.
So, Steve, I have, you know, pulled in here, because I've been working quite good myself and, you know, I have the original IMAs that were stoned back and said to you something. And then I have also daily readings for the last 12 months of how much those uses. And it's, you know, it's definitely under five hundred thousand. But anyway, would that help out that consultant?
Oh, definitely.
Because there's some high line items that needed to change, because I went over with Matt Tempa and we went over this with a kind of flat tooth comb and high line items that should be out and made some remarks, what should be in and stuff like that. And the way it's built right now, it's very simple, so it's, you know, 1.5, right? Capacity times one million and there's a half million and that's all it is. There's nothing else, there's no rates, there's no flow. And the way it fills does the sewer rates is by water in, water out. So they use the number of the water occupancy that each resident uses in the village and that's how they dictate the sewer rate. I don't know if that.
Well, let me, let me, let me get with Josh as far as, you know, getting these people, we do a Zoom, you know, we can bring in your your big screen and, or they may show up in person and we can talk about what the issues are and they'll tell you what it is they think they can do for you and we'll talk about the cost of what they can do for you and see if you're interested.
You know, because we got some big projects, the INIs coming up for that, you know, district that I've got planned down there.
I understand.
So, yeah, definitely it's big, you know, revisit and test out a lot of that. But as far as like there using more of the the passing of those, I didn't find anything happening except that.
Yeah, I'm also thinking like we're we're in the middle of like doing these upgrades, like, I don't know, shouldn't we wait till like everything is done because that's going to change, is, am I correct? It's going to change the flow?
Well, no, so we did, we did the INI and that was designed to increase capacity per the DC consent order. The phase two is designed to meet new permit standards and speedies permit, but that's not actually going to change how we interact with the village's collection system, so.
It's going, it changes hours, correct?
It's going to make our plant code compliant with the new standards of our permit and we've already done the INI, we've already increased capacity. So the only thing we're really talking about is the, how much the village is paying for using the plant and is the village's collection system have issues that need like INI, that kind of stuff. That's what we're talking about.
No, I'm sorry, I'm looking at it differently, like we're we're doing all this work. So how do you allocate this until the work is is done and we see how it's actually working? Like, that that's the question I'm asking. It just, to me, it just, it's not making sense that we would set this until we're done with the project. Because we're making a lot of investment, we're spending, right, a lot of money.
Well, it may be the case that you don't, but you won't know until you actually talk with them and they tell you.
No, I'm just throwing this out here, it's like we're doing all this and we're basically setting the price while you're mid.
Well, I think this is going to take a while to get there, just like phase two. If we wait on phase two, it'll be like, we'll all be out of office before that's done eventually.
Right, but I don't want to leave another board or boards with a mistake that we.
Yeah, which which is why it's good to have experts.
Yeah.
So, okay, Storm King Golf Course Bond Reduction Request. So, on Friday, they made their request to Sean, I think some of you have been on the board, we've done this a bunch of times now. Basically, there's a completion bond as the golf course completes portions of the project. They can take down a reduction of the clearing and grading bond that they have on file. They're asking for a third to a half of what's remaining. Sean's currently reviewing, it's literally a spreadsheet that they're going to look at. Oh, you completed like half of this and then it ties back to how much that cost to have to restore half of that. Sean will make a recommendation if he feels it's acceptable and then it'll be on the agenda. It's very, you know, we do this all the time. So Sean's going to certify that it's it's done and that the funds can be released because we're not going to have to restore it because it's been completed to there. So that'll be on for next week. Sean just didn't, I mean, we literally got it at like four o'clock on Friday, but, so that'll be on for next week. The special events, so really, just real quick, so we have this MOU for the Cornwall Youth Committee for the color run and this is what Steve had worked out with the Cornwall Youth Committee and this would basically be the MOU, a letter of agreement, and it stipulates how all of this would work. The Cornwall Youth Committee has signed this and now I'm just asking that I get permission from the board so I can sign this and we can just let this go forward.
Are we voting today?
I mean, I'd I'd like to, I mean, if you want to push it to next week, we can, but it's got to happen in September. It's coming up, it's October 5th.
I was just asking. Okay, no, no, this is Steve developed this strategy.
Yes, we had extensive discussions. Very nice people.
A lot of emails back and forth.
The issue, and I'll keep it short, was that the villages, and it's in connection with the CYC, was going to show the Barbie movie July, I think, I forget exactly.
Yeah, okay.
And they got washed out, so now they want to do that after the color run. The Barbie movie's not being sponsored by the town and there's a whole issue of food trucks and service, like it's beer and wine.
Alcohol.
At the thing, well, it's not on town grounds.
I know it's not on town grounds.
And the town has nothing to do with the Barbie movie, nothing to do with the the food trucks, nothing to do with the beverage service. So we made a very clear, tried to anyway, in the MOU. I I think by separating that out, everybody's covered.
They run in two different times, so one is ending and the other one's starting.
Yeah.
They have nothing to do with each other.
So that, yeah, trust me, a lot, a lot of work went into this, a lot of back and forth.
You want events happening.
Well, whatever, a fair amount, but not, yeah. Okay, and then we've got the Cornwall Events Committee Holiday Tree Lighting Event. So, look, I know we've kind of spoken about this and so I'm, you know, the Cornwall Events Committee knows that the fire department would like to keep the tree lighting on the standard traditional.
December 8th.
Yep, December 8th, so they're going to work through that with, you know, with the firehouse. You know, it would be the, you know, similar setup to last year, you know, pretty much the same thing. The village and town are deconflicting, the village wants to do its own thing on November 30th. So, that's why I believe the village is planning on doing their tree lighting.
Right.
And then we would be, and then, yeah, and then I guess this would allow people to go to both events.
All right, so the 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 events, they're not doing the tree lighting on the 30th because I was, I was reading the document.
Yeah, so this, this, yeah, this was, they've not amended this. I'm going to let them come back with what they're, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I get it.
There's been some, yeah, no, we will, we will.
I know, November 3rd is too.
But also apparently they're planning like 25th high school reunion for the 30th, which I can't believe I'm approaching my 25th high school reunion, which is, you know, class of 99. All right, the Cornwall Highland Arts Alliance Holiday Market. Yeah, so this, we can approve this next week, but, you know, they did this in Munger Cottage last year. They had the little artisan vendors and, okay. All right, number 13, going quickly here, okay, police department. So we've got a technology purchase here that they want to make for these antennas and and internet routers and other pieces of equipment. I'd also like to, I did speak to a gentleman, you may know him, on Angola, it's about motorcycles and I guess the loud noises because I guess they're upgraded. He was, apparently he spoke to one of the sergeants in the department and the sergeant had told them, we don't have any like decibel testing devices, so how could we possibly ticket people per, so something called like the sleep act, the New York sleep act that this guy cited. And apparently though, if you're going to be, you know, ticketing motorcycles for having, I guess, the illegal, you know, upgraded, you know, the what, mufflers or whatever, like that makes the noise, exhaust.
So they can't be louder than stock by law, but how do I, yeah, how do we know what's stock?
So, so one of your sergeants told this gentleman that we don't have the device to test it, so we have.
The decibel meter.
Yeah, decibel meter, so I guess what I'm wondering is actually, would it be good for the department to have a decibel meter that we could also use? Don't we get noise complaints too?
Yeah, New Windsor Police have one, they use it.
So, could you maybe just see what that would cost?
Sure.
Do we get that once you traffic though?
Calibration.
Medical load, yes.
What's that?
Do we get that many motorcycles go through our town?
9W.
218, 218 is about to reopen.
That's whether weekends, it's a concentrate.
I can tell you where I moved to, when they hit that light at Laurel Avenue and it hits green for them.
Straight LA way on 9W along Continental there is just like.
On 32, all along.
Does that, can I see this gentleman from located from the city or it's wrong?
He's been here for a long time, he actually knows you and, I, I, yeah, he he mentioned that he knows you. Sorry, so, yeah, he's been here a long time, a long time.
14.
Yep, we're going to start, we're going to 14 next, Per Diem Senior Bus Driver. So, look, this is just, we do, Stephen Cornelius, who, you know, used to work for us for many years, he is offering to fill the Per Diem Senior Bus Driver position, which is great. So when we have, you know, when our full, our part-time senior bus driver is unable to work or if we happen to need him for extra things, we can bring him on on a per diem basis. So that is, that is great, have a little. And then we have resignation of a highway department employee that we have as well. Let me see, we have the Cornwall Yacht Club donation, just want to say something about that real quick.
The Cornwall Yacht Club, they actually hosted the senior barbecue on July 29th. They waived the fee and then when they heard how the barbecue was designed, the seniors who should give a deposit like a half and then the rest is paid out of our, the budget line, the yacht club actually offered to pay that half. So, it was very nice because at the event, everyone's name is on the envelope and the surprise is when they came in, they received the money back and it was a really great event and all the wonderful things about our town and village, definitely, they had a wonderful time and I appreciate the generosity. So they donated $350 towards the event.
That's wonderful.
Excellent. All right, so no items received after the final agenda? Any public comments? Doesn't look like it. Moving on to the special meeting, just real quick, we have, if I could get a motion to hire Stephen Cornelius as the Per Diem Senior Bus Driver.
Mr. McCarty.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Ratsi.
Yes. Yes, if I could get a motion to approve the Cornwall Youth Committee Color Run Event MOU letter.
So moved.
Mr. McCarty.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Ratsi.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes, let, the warrant number nine, can I get a motion to approve warrant number nine?
Mr. McCarty.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Ratsi.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes, all right, let me see, no public comments unless Michael has any. All right, can I get a motion to go into executive session to discuss contract renewal for provision of ambulance services in the town of Cornwall?
So moved.
Mr. McCarty.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Ratsi.
Yes.
George.
Yes.